One.
Two and three quarters.
We're live.
We're live now. All right, Wayne, how are you?
Good afternoon. Pleased to be here. Thank you for the invitation.
To have you. So this Jonathan Harmon with Jay Harmon Home Team powered by Keller Williams. This is Table Talk where there is always room at the table to discuss all kinds of fun stuff. And this guy right here, one of my personal heroes, I don't know if I've ever told you that or not, but I look up to him so much. He has led a life of service, continues to lead a life of service. We were just talking about what the next, next version of that will be. And fellow Rotarian and again, community leader, insurance agent, grandfather, father. What other hats do you wear, buddy?
I think that probably covers all of them. I'm grateful to be with you and you know, I have the same esteem for you as well. So
Well.
I'm grateful to, grateful for the invitation again.
I did leave one out. One hell of a fish chef.
Oh, you know, we were talking about that several days ago about cooking fish. And looking back after 19 attempts, I don't know many, how many thousands of pounds of fish that I've had the opportunity to cook with our Fish Fry fundraiser with the Smyrna Rotary Club.
It's been a lot.
It's, I mean, it's been such fun, you know, the, the entire team, you know, there's different areas of responsibilities, as you well know. And I've been blessed to get to be with the fry cooks. And we, you know, we have our own little apron and we
Have your own coolers.
Yes. Hadn't, hadn't developed a secret handshake yet, but, but there is a camaraderie there with the, with the cooks that maybe no one else has, but it's, you know, just
It's a big deal when y'all get your apron, when you bring a new person in and give them, I mean, that's, that's like a thing. It's a rite of passage.
Well, you know, most of us will show up and help set up the hanger, which of course with, with the interact students is just, they have made it so much easier.
No doubt.
Then of course we get there and we, we cut the fillets. So they're, they're manageable to, to cook. And of course they have to be thawed. And then we will, when we start cooking, we'll, once one group will batter and the rest of us will cook fish. And there'll be a group that'll be cooking chicken fillets and another group that will cook fries. And I just thought it was just amazing that we cooked 500 pounds of catfish, 500 pounds of chicken fillets and 500 pounds of, of french fries this past
In three hours.
Yes.
Four hours. Yeah.
And of course there's white beans and coleslaw. And then of course the, the other vendors that, that have, and I forget, you'll have to help me with the section where they line up and people can get
Oh, you have the bait shack.
Yeah, bait shack.
Yeah, the bait shack.
The, you know, so there's just so many different aspects of the, of the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry that just, you know, I, I continue to be just, I guess, really blown away at, at how large it has become and how much fun it has become.
So, so on that note, this, this past one, 2021, we raised for the first time, we crossed the $200,000 mark. We had probably close to 2,000 people at the Smyrna Airport. Had a, had a wonderful time and we are just now starting to ramp up the next, for the next one. And, and when I say that, I mean, really starting to hit the pavement, looking for sponsors, looking for people that want to buy tickets, want to come out and support. So if you're listening and you are interested in some tickets or in sponsoring, we would love to talk to you. So definitely let us know. We, I mean, I don't even remember how many businesses. It's something like 98 businesses or maybe just over a hundred businesses. It's a bunch of businesses that support.
But I can tell you that with Commissioner slash our President, Robert Stevens, there was no doubt in my mind that we were not going to pass that 200,000.
That is one determined man, isn't he?
He was determined that the all-inclusive playground completed and just
And paid for.
And paid for.
That's right.
Of course, we, we certainly thank the town of Smyrna and the Christie Houston Foundation. Without the three-way partnership, it doesn't get completed.
For sure.
But to have those three, the entities come together to, to make what I think is, is just a gorgeous facility for, for all the children to play.
So I gotta ask you, have you played on that playground yet?
You know.
Cause I have.
Yeah.
And it's, it's awesome.
Well, at, at, at my age and with two knee replacement.
No, sir. It is all abilities. That is why we built it. Don't you give me that excuse.
But I have, but my, my two grandchildren have played.
You gotta run up the ramp with them just once.
Well, we may, we may try that sometime, but that's in the future. And I'll just have to make sure I'm in a little bit of shape.
Oh, it's funny. So before we get too much deeper, I do want to throw one, two shout outs actually. One to Mr. Brian Nail at Iberia Bank Mortgage. My friend Brian Nail, best lender in middle Tennessee, in my opinion. And it should be yours. Remember that Mack truck? That's, that's my opinion and ought to be yours.
Jerry House.
Yep. And so if you need a mortgage, give Brian a call. He would love to help. So thank you, Brian, for underwriting this section, this, this podcast on the Spread the Positive Network. And then my second shout out is to my other friend, the other bald headed wonder in this room, Mr. Trent Denton, producer Trent.
Hey, man.
How's it going?
Always, always great to be here.
Who was on time and early today.
We were two minutes early.
What the what? Yep. So.
Yep.
And then of course, production assistant, Ms. Kami.
In the building.
Is walking around. She hasn't barked yet.
No.
I was hoping, I was hoping that she would get some shout out.
Oh, yeah.
She's a good girl.
She's a cutie. Oh, she's found something. I don't know what she's playing with there, but it's, it's almost like she's asking permission right now to play with the microphone cover there. That's funny. So, and again, my friend Wayne Blair here, Rayburn Insurance. How long have you been with, with them?
Of course, I've been in the industry as of next month, 37 years with, with Rayburn. I think 35, maybe 36 this, this fall. So with, with, with Derek and Baker. And we've, it makes for a very good business partnership. Of course, their, their dad, Dub, of course, we started the agency back in 73. And you could, you could do several podcasts with, with his life.
No doubt.
You know, being a smoke jumper, National Guard Guardsman on the, on the bridge at Selma, at, at the University of Alabama, when troops were federal, well, when the National Guard was federalized. So, I mean, just, just an amazing life. And of course, raised, has raised three very good men as sons and, and all three have been president of either the Smyrna or the Laverne Rotary Club.
Yeah.
And of course Dub was president. So he and his three sons have all been Rotary past presidents.
That's awesome.
I think that's pretty awesome.
That's pretty cool. So here's a, here's a little, little trivia, little tidbit that I think you'll appreciate. So of course Dub Rayburn and Frank Crosland were, Frank Crosland Jr. Were, were very good friends. And my mom and dad both worked at Crosland Supply for forever, 20, 25 years, whatever it was. And in the bathroom and behind my mom's office, okay, almost nobody ever got to go use it. Except when I was there, that's the bathroom I would go use, right next to the commode hanging up on the wall. There's a little, little box. It was about this big and it had a golf ball and a couple of golf tees in it. And it had a scorecard for a golf, a round of golf. And it had Frank Jr. And Dub and two other guys. And I can't remember who it was, but I'll never forget. Not to get too graphic here, but every time I was standing at the commode, I'd look over to my right and there it was. And it was Frank Jr. And Dub every single time. And I was like, hey, that's cool.
Kind of a different place to put an honor or an honor.
I don't know. You know, it's just one of those things that stuck out for some reason.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I, I've, I've heard some stories of, of their hanging out over the years. So we won't talk about that.
Yeah, it's a family show.
But yeah, they, but they, they were great friends and they had some good times together.
For sure. For sure. So Wayne, what I really want to talk to you about is, you know, you, you served on the, the Rutherford County School Board for, for several years. You served at the state level school board as well, and currently you're a county commissioner. So I want to talk about service in, in the, the public sector like that. Why in the world you'd want to do it? What are the challenges from, from your perspective that you're seeing currently? And then if there is somebody out there that is interested in serving some pointers, you know, some, maybe try to talk them out of it, maybe try to, you know, give them some food for thought.
Well, my personal opinion is that everyone should run for public office at least once.
Everyone.
Everyone.
And I don't know about that.
Well, running and being successful.
That's true. That's a good point.
But running will give you a, a different perspective, you know, about, about candidates on the, you know, on the whole, having the opportunity to serve will give you a completely different perspective as to one that you might have had prior to being elected. I know I sat out in the school board audience for three years prior to being elected to the school board. And what I thought, watching school board meetings, going to workshops, going to, just trying to go to everything that they went to and try to shorten the learning curve that most people have when they attain a particular office. But even after three years, I, I found that sitting on the other side of that desk was still different. And
It's a lot of responsibility.
It is. Of course now we, you know, the, the, the school board that's serving presently, you know, they're, they have almost 50,000 students to, to look at.
And there's how many on the board?
Seven in.
Think about that for a second. Seven people make the decisions that impact the education and, and ultimately the future of 50,000 people in our county.
And responsible for, you know, a half a billion dollar budget.
That's crazy. And, and, and you don't, if you get paid, it's very little, right? I don't even, do you guys get paid?
Yes. Okay. The, the school board is paid per meeting and the county commission is as well.
But it is not.
Well, I mean, if you, if I took, especially when I was chairman of the school board for two years, if I took the hours that I spent involved in, in school related issues, it, I would not have made minimum wage.
Right.
But if you do it for the money, then you're, you're making a huge
You're gonna be very disappointed.
You're gonna be very disappointed. But, but you know, but it does take a lot of time, especially being on the school board. And if you're fortunate enough or unfortunate enough to be chairperson. And fortunately, we have, I, I think in the first in Rutherford County history, Chairman, Madam Chairman Johnson is the first female to serve as the, the board chair. And of course she, when I decided not to run and she ran and, and took my seat on the school board. And of course she has served very well and she's been rewarded for her leadership by being elected the chair and, and doing an amazing job as far as I'm concerned.
So here's, this is always my question. You don't get paid very much. You have people yelling at you all the time. Whatever decision you make, there's going to be at least a contingent of people that are not happy with it, right? You're never going to have a unanimous 100%. Everybody loves this decision. I mean, that's just impossible. Why in the world do you do it?
You know, coming from a, you know, a, a blue collar family and seeing, as I grew up, I saw that, that the children whose parents were involved in their education did, did best.
Sure.
They, they, they were, they were most successful.
Sure.
And, and having had the opportunity to serve as a PTO president, like I said, at several, at three schools for several years and just adamant that, that my children would, would do well and excel. And they did. And, and my brothers and sisters all had the same mindset. So, you know, all of my nieces and nephews all did very well. Several of them have PhDs and, and all are, are very successful in their, in their professions. And, but I think being a, a PTO president during that time, and I don't mean this in a wrong way, but it steeled me, S T E E L, for the, the complaints, the it's agreements that, that, that come from some of the decisions that I had made. And like I said, you know, one group, they'll be happy with the way you voted. Another group may not be so much, but it's, you, you have to have that desire to serve. And I think, you know, in Rotary is, is also part of that. If, and you may be a line or you may be a JC, but having that willingness to serve or that desire to serve will lead you sometimes past just community service. And maybe in, in my case, I had, I've had the honor of serving the community. And, and I like to refer to us as a county community because when I was on the school board, if, if Last Cassis needed it more than, than the community that I lived in, you know, we sent it to Last Cassis if it needed to go to, to, to a Mufflersboro based school. That's, that's where it went. So you know, it's, it's having a mentality of, of, of serving everyone and, and, and doing it in the right way.
So what is, what is the reward then? You know, and two part, what's the reward? And how do you know if you're successful at what you do?
Well, I, I think it's, it's self gratification. Needless to say, you know, I've, I got emails, especially later on in, in my school board career, that when somebody didn't agree with me, you know, they would accuse, you know, accuse me of the good old boy mentality. And, and, and that's just part of the deal that you go in knowing that, that there's going to be adversarial relationships because of the decisions that you make, that you make. And, and fortunately as a school board member or as commissioner, you know, we have, we have a number of strong professionals in the central office and, and the, in the county office, you know, to guide you in your decisions. And, and we know things that maybe the general public would not know. And, and they don't understand why the decision was made the way it was. So, but you try to
And they certainly don't have the big picture, right? So you, you tend to clue in on the stuff that immediately impacts you.
I hope so.
And so they don't necessarily see, if I live in Smyrna, oh, well, Last Cassis really did need this more than, than we did in Smyrna.
In that, and, and how would they know?
Right.
And, but other than giving us an opportunity to, to, to share why. And, and you have to, in order to do that, because the media presence really isn't getting the word out these days. And I don't know how many people actually watch YouTube, but, but every meeting that the county commission holds, steering, Public Works, Health Ed, Public Safety, they're all televised. You can watch it live or you can catch up on it. You know, at your leisure. And you can sit on the couch with a Diet Coke and, and sip, sip on it and, and listen and, and know what's going on.
You don't even have to put pants on.
You don't even have to drive to the courthouse or the central office. You can just, you can just listen.
Yeah.
You know, and all the, all the commissioners, their contact information is on the web. It's on the website, excuse me, and school board, all of their emails and, and contact information is available. So, you know, if you, if you have a question, if you don't understand why the decision was made, the way it was made.
Call and ask.
Call or email and ask.
What's been more rewarding, county commission or school board?
Boy, you know, they have their different challenges, you know, with, with the school board. Budget is always, you know, forefront of every year. But with COVID, the, the, the teacher or the professional educator shortage, that's, that's concerning for Rutherford County, which is growing so fast. Space has become a, a real problem.
Facilities, yeah.
The, you know, the school board voted to, to rezone some, from some students to kind of space them out. Because I, right now I think Rock Vale, which is what, three years old, maybe.
Yeah.
Before I get
Two or three.
Yeah. You know, three years old or four years old as it's the third largest high school in the state.
It's crazy, isn't it?
You know.
And it's out, it's, I mean, compared to some of the others, it's out in the middle of nowhere.
But, but your, but your other schools, the only one that I believe is not at full capacity or overcapacity at this point is Segal, but it's, I think it's close to 1,900 students.
That's crazy.
And so with 1,800 students coming in this year, you know, what does next year with all the construction going on? And now you, the former director of schools, Harry Gill, used to say that we are judged by the way we, we treat our children, our students. And, you know, you, you want them to have the best opportunity, you know, for academic success. And, and I don't think that being out in a trailer is, is where they need to be. Of course, you know, we, we've tried since I was on the school board to get out of the trailer business, but we still have 150 plus of them. And I think they're going to have to buy a couple just to replace a couple. And, but capital projects, which comes from local money. You know, BEP pays a portion of, you know, the, the teachers and the administrators salary. But your and my tax dollars pay for, for new schools, for new footprints, for HVACs, for like I said, for new roofs.
Portables.
And, and, and you'll never hear me use that term because they're trailer, because we pick them up and we move them. And, and they, it costs, if I recollect correctly, it costs about $8,000 to move. And then another 30 to, to hook up all of the electrical, the intercom, the safety.
It's not like they're cheap.
They're not inexpensive at all, but every time you move one, the integrity is diminished somewhat.
Sure.
It's a, it's a stick built.
It's a trailer. Yeah.
It's a trailer.
That's right. What, what's the biggest issue? You, you just hit on it for the, for the schools. And that is, you know, facilities and, and capital and, and space for the kids. And of course the teacher, I mean, it's always a thing to have teacher shortages and, you know, how do you pay them a little bit more? How do you, or some, you know, hopefully at some point we get to the point where you can pay them a lot more.
Sure.
What's the biggest issue facing the county right now? Switch to commissioner.
Two big issues for me, and this is, this is my heart.
Sure.
The, the law enforcement community. I think presently we're short maybe 30 to 40 deputies.
Wow. At the, at the county.
At the county level and, you know, unfortunately for us, the sheriff's office, they do a great job of, of training and vetting their officers. But then you, 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 you train them, you, you have them, you know, ready to go. And then a community that pays more steals them away. And so, you know, keeping, training, retaining professional law enforcement, you know, along with the first responders, be it fire department, ambulance, you know. So, you know, all of that is, is a, is a concern for me.
I want to ask you a quick question. I'm going to interrupt you. I'm sorry. The, you mentioned first responders. What is, when you finish this, go back and talk about the county is working in conjunction and kind of supplementing or even replacing. This is my understanding and maybe I'm, I'm wrong. Some of the volunteer fire departments and things like that. They're, they're pulling them in. Is that?
Well, what the under chairman Peddys Reed's leadership, he's chairman of public safety. They've taken some of the federal money and are now building public safety buildings in the more rural areas. The first was Rock Vale, but you'll see one in Walter Hill and one in Last Cassis in Kitterell. And basically that will give the first responders, your, your, your deputies, your fire department, your ambulance, and it will have a space that basically is tornado proof. You know, that, that citizens could come. And also we give the deputies, you know, home base rather than having to go all the way to back to the sheriff's office to do their paperwork. It'll, it'll give them a, a, a place.
Decentralize a little.
Basically, yes, sir.
But it, but are they also replacing some of the volunteer departments?
I think it's, it's a hybrid. I may, since I'm not on public safety, I, I hope I don't misspeak.
We invite Pettis, by the way. He's, he's a good dude.
He is. Commissioner Chairman Reed probably called me up and said, hey, you didn't get that.
You totally botched it, man.
And, but I, I think it's a hybrid with some full timers along with some volunteers.
Gotcha.
Is my understanding.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, but I don't see how it could work any other way. So I feel that has to be the, the.
But see, that's good to, to start doing that because that also affects, as you know, insurance rates and things of that nature.
Your protection classes are awfully important when they start writing, writing your property. The other issue is
Yeah, number two here.
Number two, and, and I've been serving on, I have served on Public Works, you know, since the day I was appointed and since I've been elected as well. And the Middle Point landfill has been front and center. We've, we've explored options, you know, that has been one issue that the media has given some attention to. And, you know, if you haven't watched the, and I'm having a senior moment here, the public meeting where they met with the solid waste, the regional solid waste council. And I think there was about 30 of our citizens that spoke. And I remember some of my, some of our older, I gotta remember that I am one now, citizen spoke about the, about the smell and the change of quality of life that that, that that caused them. And, and what was also very heart wrenching was there was, if I recollect correctly, three Iraqi or Afghanistan vets that, that spoke and basically said that the smell from the landfill, you know, basically caused them PTSD. And because of the, the smell reminded them of the war front and, and that
So what's, what's, what is, is there a solution yet? I mean, I know we've kicked a lot of different things around and hunted since things down the road. Like what are we going to do?
Well, there is an opportunity for us to, there's a, there's an entity out there that, that has given us a, a proposal that takes all solid, all paper. You know, not just clean paper, but they'll take all paper. And they'll also take plastics, even if it's, even if it has coke syrup or something, they'll, they'll clean it. And they, they send the, the paper and it's made into boxes that Amazon will, or Lowe's or somebody sends, sends to your house. And I believe that that, that, that paper can be, and cardboard can be recycled seven times. And with what we have put together, it's, it's my opinion that we could, or at least that's what's been shared, is that we can make a 40% reduction in our carbon footprint in this county just by a robust and vigorous cycling program.
But how do you get people to adopt it? So, and, and here's, here's what I mean by that. You know, I, I attempted the, there was a recycling company that was around for, for a while, you know, several years ago. You know, I, I attempted the, um, there was a recycling company that was around for, for a while, um, you know, several years ago. And you put everything into one bin and they sorted it out. They made no money. They went out of business, you know, and, and for me it was, okay, did I need to put this in here? When did they come? They come at a different time as a trash collection. You know, in Murfreesboro, the city picks up the trash and Smyrna, you hire somebody or you take it to the dump. Like, how do you get everybody going the same direction? Um, and then second part of that is, that's great. We reduce it by 40%, but what do you do with what's already there?
Well, there are some other options that we have considered. Um, the sticking point right now is whether or not, uh, uh, Middle Point's going to be allowed to expand.
Right.
And double in size, which, uh, which I am not a proponent of. Um, you know, presently, um, there's at any given time, 30 different out of county entities that, uh, bring their solid waste to, uh, to Rutherford County. Uh, Davison's County alone brings, uh, 700,000 tons of their solid waste to Middle Point. Um, you know.
Is that per year, per?
That's per year.
Wow.
You know, and here's a little side note that the, the Tennessee, the, uh, state of Tennessee says that each Tennessean produces one ton of solid waste each year. Which, uh, if you think about that's, I mean, if we.
That's a car a year.
Well, we have what, 360,000 people in Rutherford County now. So that's 360,000 plus tons of garbage.
No, it'd be 360 million, right?
No, no, we're, we're, I'm just talking about Rutherford County. Now Tennessee has what, 3 million people? So that would be.
No, no, but if it's a thousand pounds.
No, a, a ton.
So 2,000 pounds, 360,000 people.
Okay. Well, your math is.
Is, is a lot. I mean, it's in the millions.
That's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of trash. But we kind of talk in tonnage rather than pounds. I don't know. Maybe, maybe we'd be better off in speaking in pounds.
It's a, it's a little more relevant, right?
It's, it's extremely relevant, but, um, the, uh, we just, we need to do some things differently and, uh, and recycling is, is a robust and vigorous recycling, uh, attempt is, is, is in my mind, a, a first step. And there are some, uh, uh, programs out there that actually will, uh, will turn solid waste into a, a, a clean energy where you can, you could burn it for TV, TVA. Uh, I mean, there's just all sorts of opportunities out there.
I think that's what they're doing in Pigeon Forge, right? Isn't that with that?
I think what they're doing is just that they're, they're composting. I think their, their, their biggest, uh, their biggest, uh, attempt there is composting. But, uh, you may be right. They, um, uh, I haven't been up to date on what everybody else is doing because we're trying to figure out what's going to be the best opportunity for us.
It's definitely a problem. Um, man, I think I, I think I just caught your senior moment. And I'm not even, I, I mean, I'm old, but I'm not that old.
Well, you're not as old as I am anyways. So, you know, where did all the years go?
Uh, man, I tell you what. So I, 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 let's, let's do that. Let's, let's completely shift gears for a second. You've got two awesome kids.
Thank you. I think so as well.
I, I know them and they're, they're phenomenal human beings. They, they take after their daddy pretty well.
Thank you.
What, give me a parenting tip. I've got a 15 year old and a 10 year old. Give me a parenting tip.
Well, you know, a lot of times it's, it's all about your gut. Um, you know.
I have a big one.
Well, um, as, as well as I do, but you know, I, I, I hope my, my two, uh, children would say, well, dad, you led by example. And, and I pray that, that, that that was the case. Uh, now, did I, did I make, did I make some mistakes? Uh, you know, no doubt. I, I'm sure my daughter will tell me that, uh, the apron strings were way too tight when, um, you know, when she was a teenager in high school. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm just so very proud of, uh, at, at all that they've accomplished and, uh, and what they continue to, uh, to accomplish. And of course my daughter giving me a, uh, granddaughter and a grandson is just, uh, I am blessed way beyond measure, uh, with them. And, and I can tell you that as a grandparent, the, the first time that they put their arms out to pick, wanting you to pick them up, your heart melts and it becomes a, a moment in, in time that you will never forget.
Yeah.
It's just a grandchild's love is without question unconditional and, uh, and a grandparent's, uh, love is reciprocal.
Well, I told you before we started that my father reminded me on, has reminded me on multiple occasions that if he could have skipped me and gone straight to the grandkids, he would have done it. So.
I'm, I'm not going to make that, I'm not going to make that misstatement because, uh, that could come back to haunt me.
Oh, oh, trust me. I remember it well. So I, uh, I, I will take that into consideration when I'm booking his, uh, uh, Twilight Years, uh, accommodations.
There you go.
But, uh, that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, there was something else I was going to ask you along with that. I think, I think I'm wearing out, buddy.
Well, I mean, you, you, you know, you do this quite often. Was, uh, was I wearing the school board hat the last time I got to talk?
I think so. Yeah. I don't know. You, you had just started the commission.
Okay.
I mean, just start like, like a week.
Yeah. I was, I was big time in that, in my learning curve.
That's right.
It's a.
Why, why have you chosen not to continue?
You know, at some point in time, you have to decide that, you know, that, that there are fresh ideas out there that, that you may no longer possess. You may have some wisdom that, uh, maybe somebody new coming on board, uh, may not have, but you know, as long as you're willing to share that wisdom, if, if it's desired, I, I think that's, I think that's where you should be. But, you know, I'm, um, if you take in consideration the, uh, the number of years that I've spent, you know, between school and county and community service that, uh, you know, maybe it's, it's time to, uh, to let somebody else.
Pass the baton.
Yeah. Take the reins. Now I'm, I'm still, you know, I want to be active in my, my church congregation. I want to be active in Rotary. Uh, I hope without saying how much I want to be in my grandchildren's lives and, uh, you know, my prayer continues to be that the Lord lets me live long enough for them to remember me.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I'm going to do my darndest to make sure that I help him out with that task.
Absolutely.
And, uh, but you know, it just, I, I'd like to think there's, uh, you know, other people out there that have, uh, that have ideas that they haven't had opportunity to express yet. And, uh, they, uh, they have a desire to serve and, and, uh, maybe it's time for me to get out of the way.
So not, not asking a name here, okay? Uh, but in your, in your mind's eye, not an identity, but what is the, who is the person that replaces you on the, on the county commission? You know, like what, what are the attributes? What are, who is that person?
Uh, the, as far as I'm concerned, the key is someone who has a heartfelt concern for the county community. And I don't, I don't guess I've coined that phrase, but I've, I've certainly tried to use.
So not their particular residents, but the county community as a whole.
The county community, because I've always, uh, in my time on the school board, like I expressed earlier, if, if another end of the county needed our resources, that's where I would vote for it to go. Um, if, uh, if we needed it, I would certainly, you know, uh, on, on the end that I represented, I'd certainly make the case too. But in the end, uh, we have to make the best decision that's, that's in the best interest of the total county community. And if you're, if you're a one, uh, if you're a one issue person, or if you're a one district or zone person, then you're not going to be very effective because, um, you're not going to have any help. You, you have to take in the big picture and be cooperative and say, hey, you know, you're right. This issue is more important than my issue right now.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you just, again, uh, a heartfelt, um, desire to, uh, to serve the county community. And if, and anything else, I think is lacking.
Gotcha. That's good stuff. So if you're thinking of it, when is your term up?
Um, I will be a county commissioner, Lord willing, until the last day of August.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Of this year.
Yes. Uh, the, uh, uh, August, was it third? Oh, I hope I hadn't messed that up. But, uh, but the, uh, county general, uh, offices will be, uh, up for, uh, reelection on, in August.
Oh, very good. Um, all right. Anything else you got?
Just that, uh, you know, certainly, uh, been gratified to, uh, to for the community to, to allow me to serve. I know that's, um, that's always said, but I, as just, you know, I'm, I was born in Smyrna when they didn't even have a hospital back in 1953 and, uh, um, and I've lived in, in, in the, uh, the town of Smyrna, the city of Laverne, uh, almost all my life with, had a little, had some time out in the country in my early years, but, uh, you know, I just, I.
Country's just about gone now.
Well, it is here. Yeah, it is. But, um, you know, I'm just so pleased to have, to have lived and grown, uh, grow, grown here in Rutherford County and, and that my children were, were educated here and, uh, and although they, they don't live here in Rutherford County presently, but they still have a love for our county community as I, as I do.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so, you know, I'm just really pleased to have, to have gotten to serve.
Um, he's a good one, ladies and gentlemen. If you don't know Wayne, stop in at, uh, Rayburn Insurance or, uh, give him a call and, uh, pick his brain a little bit about what's going on in the county because he will always share with you. He will always be fair and, uh, you may not like what he says, but, uh, you know that it's coming from, from the right place.
Thank you.
Um, and if you're interested again in that Wings of Freedom Fish Fry sponsorship, definitely hit one of us up. Uh, we will get you in the right, uh, place. We, I, I don't know what our goal is this year. The, the new president hasn't said it yet.
Well, I feel bad for Jason. He's got a hard act to follow.
He does.
But, you know, we just all have to come together and support him in his effort and do our due diligence and, uh, hopefully it'll be bigger and better and.
Mister, Mister Jason Surratt, that, that, if, if anybody can do it though, he's the man.
He's a, he's a great guy.
He is. He's a good dude. Um, one more shout to Mr. Brian Nail over at Iberia Bank Mortgage. Thank you so much, Brian, for underwriting, uh, us here at Spread the Positive and, uh, helping support the mission that Mr. Trent Denson.
Thank you, Brian.
Has, uh, has undertaken here with STP Studios, um, at Cedar Glade. Um, you got anything, uh, any guests that you'd like to see? Uh, hit us up. We'd love to have them. If you'd like to be a guest, hit us up on that. And if you want to support Spread the Positive, absolutely contact Trent Denson and, uh, let's get you, let's get you on the rolls.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Wayne. That was awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Kami, thank you so much for standing guard at the door.
What a great girl.
She is, uh, she's been fantastic. She was growling at somebody earlier. I don't know what that was about.
I hope it wasn't, but.
No, not yet.
No, somebody was going to come in and she said, no.
They're recording.
Back off.
Recording in progress.
That's right.
Appreciate y'all.
All right. Well, if you need anything real estate related, give me a shout and, uh, have a great rest of the week. Talk to you again real soon.